Good afternoon and hello. My name is Deborah Gross. I am the council member for District 7. And I'm what? We have feedback. Is it ready? It's okay now. I'm here to welcome you to Pittsburgh City Council's Cablecast Post Agenda for Tuesday, June 13, 2023, relative to Bill 2022-0376 Tri-Party Agreement. Will the clerk please read the title of the bills?
Bill 376, Resolution Amending Resolution 661 of 2017 entitled, "Resolution Amending Resolution Number 432 of 2017 entitled, 'Resolution Authorizing Cooperation Agreement or Agreements with the City of Pittsburgh, the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh, and the Pittsburgh Land Bank to Provide the Future Shared Administrative Service for the Transfer of Property Among Agencies for Governmental Redevelopment and Portfolio Management Purposes, All Districts by Providing for City Council Review of Policies and Procedures of the Pittsburgh Land Bank Pursuant to Section 174a.13d of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances to Authorize an Amendment to the Cooperation Agreement."
Thank you. And for the record, today we are joined by council members Lavelle, Coghill, Strasburger, Warwick. Do we have any council members online? Louise, do you see anybody online? No council members online, but we may be joined by other members periodically. And we also have joining us at the table, we have members of the administration and the URA Board. We have City Finance Director Jennifer Gula. I forgot actually Kyle, your title. Kyle Chintolopoly, who works in the Office of Management and Budget officially and chairs the Board of the Urban Redevelopment Authority. City Solicitor Kresha Kubiak. And also blanking on the name of the real estate attorney at our table, please. Jack Miller, thank you, also from the City Solicitor's Office. And so I want to, we'll be giving each of the speakers about five to 10 minutes. I think there, some of them have slides to give council members and the public a kind of refresh about property recycling and the different tools that the city, the URA, and the land bank have to recycle properties, which again, if you're not familiar with the topic, means basically clearing the back liens, the municipal liens that may be on the property from the school board, from the county, or from the city. And if you'll indulge me for a minute, I just wanted to frame the conversation a little bit by several of the conversations that I've been having with city leadership on the topic. And I think that a really good synopsis was that we have basically like different sized tools for different kinds of these projects. And on the city side, we have the power to take sales, these properties to auction. And while it might be easy for an individual to try to buy a property at an auction, only the highest bidder gets the property. And it's the tool that the city has is to take properties to auction. On the opposite end of the spectrum, we have the Urban Redevelopment Authority. And city council can send properties to the Urban Redevelopment Authority with a specific buyer by name. We want you to sell this property to X nonprofit or to X individual. But it's a very cumbersome, long process that really you wouldn't be able to do and to complete unless you have like, I always joke, like five attorneys, right? Unless you're a really large operator, to get through that redevelopment process that is state, a state code process, you wouldn't be able to do it. And so it's really for the larger operators and larger lands assembly. And then in the middle is what we're hoping, the gap that the land bank we're hoping will fill, that you can direct maybe not to a specific individual, but city council can direct the purposes, right, for urban ag or for greenway or for affordable housing, that we can really kind of direct mission areas, public policy areas that we want properties to go for. And that you can, the land bank can clear title to those and direct those disposition processes that aren't so burdensome. It's not as bad as trying to get to the URA process. So you can do it as a small operator. And so we have different sized plates, but unlike Goldilocks, we're not trying to put all of, you know, it's not only about the middle sized plate. We want to figure out which of the kinds of properties that we have are appropriate for which of these tools. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to our speakers so we can give us kind of more in-depth understanding of what they do and what they can do so that we can all jointly understand all of the powers that we have for recycling these properties for the common good. So Director Gula would like to introduce yourself.
Sure. I'm Jen Gula. I'm the current finance director and the city treasurer for the city and the school district, actually. So my department is charged with overseeing the city's inventory of properties. And how we actually came to acquire these properties is through treasure sale. So anytime a property is tax delinquent, the city can put it into a treasure sale, which is public auction, and it allows Joe Public to come and bid on the property. Or if it's, no one takes it at the treasure sale, the city can bring it into its inventory and then later sell it to another buyer who's interested. They always have to go to the highest bidder because the objective is for us to recoup any lost taxes or demolition liens or clean and green, or clean and liens, or any of those other kind of municipal charges that were attached to the property. And also for the length that we have in an inventory, potentially reimburse us for any treasure sale costs or maintenance costs, land care costs, and things of that nature. So that's our objective. We also hold the property reserve, which is meant for community development groups to collect properties that, and have a buyer that's in line with what their community plans, you know, align with their community plans and of that nature. And then we also transfer properties to the URA for large-scale development projects. Large-scale development projects aren't really in our wheelhouse, and so that's what the URA is meant for. So in the past, we've had issues where we have collected so many properties through the treasure sale process that it's been a difficult process maintaining them. It's been very costly. And sometimes the, the sales process can be very slow, so they don't necessarily move through our pipeline very quickly. So some of these other resources that we have enable us to do that. So, but specifically, I think it's very important to note that they always have to go to the highest bidder. Anybody that puts an application in for a property may not actually be the person that winds up with it. Anybody can object to the sales process up until we have quiet title to the property, which means when we sell it to you, the title is free and clear of any kind of, you know, attachments. So you get to start fresh. But up until that point, any other interested person can come and apply for it, in which case, if there's more than one qualified purchaser, it would go to court auction. And then again, a judge would put it to auction and it would go again to the highest bidder. So a lot of times, even though we send this legislation up saying that we intend to sell it to this person, it may not actually be that person after we go through this whole process that actually winds up with the property. So. Yeah, so we, in the past, you know, things have been pretty slow, but we've done some reorganizing. And so last year, we actually still have about 94. We started like 94, 95 sales last year and closed on 68 of them. So there's still not, almost 100 of them yet to close on this year that are currently moving through the sales process. And this only started basically after March 2022. We didn't sell anything for the first three months of the year. This year, up until this month, actually today, we have 94 sales started and we've closed on 28. So we've been going great guns recently, and hopefully that'll help move things along. But, and it'll enable us to do other things as well now that we're not sitting there stagnant withholding all these properties. So. Yep. So they said we have a T sale. We also bring in our stuff through T sale, but we also have a side yard program. It enables a citizen who borders a city-owned property that's under 5,000 square feet to purchase it from us for $200 plus costs. We only entertain objectors for other individuals that abut the same property. So it's still public, there are still objectors allowed, but the number of objectors is limited. So we also use, like as I mentioned before, transfers to the URA for large-scale development projects. And we also use the property reserve to help CDCs with their plans, their community plans. We can go. Some other things that we're looking at too are using greenways to actually, if we have properties in land prone or slag prone areas on slopes, we don't necessarily want to sell those to the general public because development could potentially cause it to slide. And in good faith, I think that really isn't good for business. So we're looking, so we're looking at making them environmental greenways to keep that from happening and also from being clear cut. So sometimes the vegetation actually holds the hillside intact. And then using other properties for green space and for things like urban agriculture and rain gardens.
So just over the past 10 years, this just sort of gives you a look at the percentages of the different types of sales that we've done, you know, how many we've transferred to the URA, how many we've sold that T sale is actually public sales and other sales such as the CDCs and side yards and what that looks like. I think that's pretty much it.
I think next steps, we're looking at holding, in the past, we've only had maybe three treasure sales per year. During COVID, we've only had one, mostly because they had to be held virtually and that was a whole different set of issues. But this year, because we've added extra staff, we are actually able to do, we've scheduled four treasure sales for this year. And I think in future, we're probably going to try to hold that many as well. And I think that's it.
Thank you, Director.
You're welcome.
And next we have Mr. Chintolopoly.
Thank you, council member. I'll give Louise a second to pull the slides up. Good afternoon. My name's Kyle Chintolopoly. I serve in Mayor Ganey's administration as the city's chief economic development officer. As council member Gross said, I'm also on the Board of the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh. So here today, I guess a little bit in both of those capacities. What I'll focus on a bit is the, the URA's disposition process. I think council member Gross gave a good overview of sort of the comparative advantages, if you will, of the city process or the challenges of that as well, as well as the URA process and the promise of what the land bank, you know, could do as we think about neighborhood scale projects. So we'll touch on, you know, those themes a bit. I'll try to be brief because I know folks have questions they want to get into. So if the solicitor and Director Gula elbow me because I'm rambling, don't be alarmed. We'll go to the next slide, Louise. So yeah, that was the overview that I mentioned. We'll kind of touch on each of those here very briefly. This is really just meant to sort of diagram what council member Gross, I think, did a good job of walking through. You know, at one end of the spectrum, we have the city of Pittsburgh in our disposition process there that, as Director Gula walked you through, is really focused around the treasure sale and that we have to sell to the highest bidder. There's instances where we want to do that, right? It makes sense. There's instances where we don't. On the other end of the spectrum, you know, we have the Urban Redevelopment Authority. And as the council member alluded to, our process can be quite cumbersome. There's a lot of barriers to entry, if you will. Those are well placed. You know, they're rooted in state redevelopment law and the URA's disposition process. It involves, you know, at least three votes by our Board, which happens over time. And really, the goal of that is to ensure that the folks are coming forth with a redevelopment plan to us as the redevelopment authority are going to indeed end up doing what they said they were. So we make sure that they have all their finances in place, all their drawings and everything, you know, finished. So it works really well for larger scale projects. When we think about, you know, one-offs, a single homeowner, small-scale commercial, some of the instances that the director talked on around urban ag and things of that nature, that's a lot for, you know, as the council member said, smaller, you know, not as well resourced groups that don't have five lawyers. We indeed only even have two with us today to get through that process. So, you know, if we go to the next slide, you can see, you know, a few examples of, you know, recent URA projects that we have done, you know, disposition on. And as council member Gross, you know, mentioned, those votes, when we're getting ready to dispose of those properties, come, you know, through city council as well. So just last week, you all took a vote related to Bedford Choice Phases 1A and B. This is a project council member Lavelle knows very well. That's the image that you see there too. And through that and a few others on here, we've been able to really leverage the URA's process to help us advance affordable housing efforts across the city. As an example, Bedford itself is 123 units total. It's going to help us to facilitate some off-site development to allow for move first for the residents of Bedford so that they don't have to find temporary housing before the new units are built. And then importantly, as part of Choice Neighborhood, should we be successful in getting that grant from the federal government, we'll do one-for-one replacement for every unit there. But for this, this one in particular, it's 123 total units. 99 of those are affordable, with 90 of them being replacement units. I think you're all familiar with the success we had around Lamar Choice. I would say there again, you know, housing was the prime focus. There was 334 units of new housing there. Roughly half or so of those, a little over a third actually, were affordable and/or were replacement units. And then another third were additional affordable units. But there too, we were also able to help facilitate the building of a new city park, expansion of, you know, green stormwater infrastructure, and then also a community garden and community green space that was important to the Lamar consensus group. Cedarwood Homes, the council president, I know this is one that she's familiar with in her district, senior, you know, housing that's being facilitated through that process, as well as Hilltop Scattered Sites. This is in council member Kraus's district, which will be at least a own structure through the low-income housing tax credit program. And then one that, you know, hopefully will be in position to vote on soon, that's in District 4, you know, is Burg Place, which was a long process, a very challenged property, and again, is well suited for the URA to take on. Fairwood Industrial Park's another one. It's a larger scale, 25 acres, you know, heavier scale industrial, not something that would make sense to go through the city process because of those protections that we'd want to see, but does make sense to go through the URA's process because of the way that the... I tried to get some variety. Yeah, yeah, I tried to get some variety in there. And then lastly, the Hill District Grocery Store, which, you know, we're in position to, you know, return that as fresh food access for the residents of the Hill District. And a lot of that is because of it having gone through the URA process and the protections that we have for the public in the way that that's structured. So if we go to the next slide, and I think the council member, council member Gross touched on this, really the potential as we see it with the land bank is for that neighborhood scale development because it does have certain advantages. I'm only touching on two here. There's some others we can get into, you know, as questions may come up. But there's more control over the end user as opposed to the city's open bid process. I think Director Gula touched on that, council member Gross touched on that. So it allows for some control related to that with the end use akin to the URA, but more importantly, as a second bullet point, there's lower barriers to entry for smaller projects. So we still get public protections to ensure that what's ultimately done there is what they said, but it's not to the level of, you know, barrier, if you will, as the URA process would have. And then because of that, these are really well suited for neighborhood projects. So we think about affordable homeownership, small-scale commercial development projects, the Pittsburgh Property Reserve, which, you know, Director Gula touched on. And then one that I forgot to add here, I would say, would be urban ag, community gardens, and things of that nature as well. Last slide is just to sort of touch on, you know, the legislation is before us, or before you, pardon me, right now in terms of the original tri-party agreement, which was entered into between the URA, the city, and the land bank from July 2018, and then previously amended shortly thereafter. The proposed amendment before us now is really just to allow for transferring of properties between the entities. The previous structure of it only allowed for transfer of properties from the land bank to the other two entities. The process is kind of now envisioned would mimic something similar as the URA's process that you're all familiar with, where there's a concurrence memo, it ultimately comes to council for a vote, and then goes through, you know, final disposition with the land bank in this instance as opposed to the URA. So I can stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chintolopoly. We all, we have Solicitor Kubiak. And you don't have slides. No slides.
I do not.
No slides.
I do not. Thank you very much for having me. I am Kresha Kubiak. I'm the city solicitor and chief legal officer. I want to speak to what, when I first came into this position, I was appointed by Mayor Ganey, that we took a look at the fact that, you know, the city has 13,000 properties, right? And some of those properties date back to the early 80s that have continued to be kind of non-developed and sat out there. And it's a real issue that we're very conscious of. I'll say this, I don't think we've always been the best neighbor, right? As the city of Pittsburgh, as we have owned property, often we have contributed to some neighborhood blight because those properties continue to sit out there and aren't being developed, being used, being taken care of. And they also have the added negativity of the fact that they're also not, there's no one's paying taxes on them either. So they are somewhat contributing to our situation. So what we hope, what council approved, what Mayor Ganey put into his budget was a real estate position in the legal department so that we could concentrate just on those 13,000 properties and see what we can do to move the levers more quickly, to get them through the quiet title process more quickly, to figure out kind of creative legal solutions to turn them into affordable housing ownership. But as I say that, with the fact that there's 13,000 of them, there is not one solution for any of them. We need to dive into the details of each of these properties. URA is one of the solutions. The land bank is one of the solutions. The city is one of the solutions. CDCs are one of the solutions. But all of them are needed in order for us to make real, a real difference on those, the amount of those properties and to bring that down to a more reasonable size and yet make sure that that land is being properly used in the community. So I believe the one big benefit for us from a legal perspective for the land bank is one that they can join multiple properties in one complaint that goes in front of court. And so that speeds along the process. And the second is that they have mandatory time limits for the quiet title process. So the city is committed to continuing to quiet title on the properties that it owns that will stay with the city. And we will continue to keep a large amount of that. I will also say this, the city is committed to its oversight role and making sure that if these properties go to other buyers, be they the URA, be they the land bank, be they anybody else, be they CDCs, that we make sure that they are sticking to a plan, that the development is happening quickly, that it is happening the way that city council and the mayor want it to happen. And so we never are relinquishing our oversight role regardless of where those properties sit, but we do need every lever we have in order to make sure we're making a dent on that. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Also, Jack Miller is the real estate attorney. He's only been in that position a couple of months, but as he gets his arms around all of the details of this process, he's also here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Ms. Melo, do you have any opening comments?
No, nothing to add. Thank you.
Okay, appreciate it. And just also for the record, I shared, I think, a month or two ago with kind of everybody who's at the table and all council members and their staff, the copy of the current tri-party agreement and the copies of all of the land bank documents that we could, the origination legislation that I sponsored in 2014, creating the land bank, all of the bylaws that we have of the land bank's foundational documents, some of the charts on the, kind of how much property has been recycled, and as well as this proposed agreement and its, and its attachments, the exhibits to it, which I think council got copies of, the ones that you have, we only received, I think, in late November, early December. So we, the initial resolution came out across to the council table without any of the attached documents. It's just an open request for authorization. So I think we had a bunch of us in the room at the same time, but I'm still tempted to kind of just go down the table. Councilwoman Smith, would you like to go first or? All right, let's go in reverse order then. I know Councilwoman Warwick was here when I walked in. So I'm going to start with you, Councilwoman Warwick.
Okay, I guess, so, yeah, well, so my first question, I think Solicitor Kubiak, you answered, so is to better understand the expedited quiet title process. Like why is it that the land bank is faster than the city?
The state law that created land banks set a period of time that the courts have to respond to a request for quiet title. So unfortunately, the way civil cases currently happen in our court system, and again, no shade on the judiciary of the Allegheny County, because honestly, and many times, they have been extremely timely with us, but at the same time, they don't have set deadlines. And the land bank, in its kind of unique position, sets a deadline that makes sure that it gets through the process more quickly.
Okay. And then you also said it can do multiple...
Oh, sure.
Oh, yeah.
You can also bundle them as they go through the process. They don't need separate docket entries for the land bank.
Okay. And then I guess, so we had some public comment earlier and we heard from a number of speakers who, specifically with the side yard program, about sort of waiting years to try and get. Now, why is that? I'd like to sort of understand why that is.
The largest part of that process is the quiet title process. So even though we're probably the most efficient that that office has ever run with processing applications and sales, the quiet title process is the biggest chunk of time in the whole city sales process. It takes a long time to, sometimes, we used to get our own title reports, but thankfully, we've actually put that to the purchaser now. So it depends on how long it takes the purchaser then to get a quiet title report to us. But then we actually have to serve every single creditor in the title report. And sometimes it takes research to find if there's any address changes or anything of that nature. It has to be extremely detailed. And then once we serve them and notify them that we're actually doing a quiet title, we have to wait for all the mail to come back. We send it certified. And after every single piece comes back, then there's a clock for 30 days. They get 30 days in which to respond to contest the quiet title action. If there are no contestments, then we can file the petition, and then we are at the mercy of the courts as to when it goes in front of a judge in order for him to wipe the title clean. So it takes, it could take a long time. And it's not necessarily a timeline that we have very much control over at all.
I will say this, I think Director Gula's made a lot of changes already that have started to speed up that process within her team. She's also gotten some software that is really helpful to get us to tracking that, that we will be using in the law department as well. We are also looking into other options, legal options that we do at the treasure sale process that would make this quiet title process quicker. So we, you know, part of our goal is to speed that process up as much as possible, and we will, I think, make strides on that. So I want us to still know that the city will make sure that it is prepared to process these properties as quickly as it can from its side. That said, there's still certain things that the land bank can do better than the city, but I am not, but I think we need both levers to be able to keep going.
So, yeah, so that kind of brings me to, so this whole process of, you know, contacting all the lien holders and getting that, the land bank has to do that too, do they not?
They do. It is really the...
So it's really just the court at the end?
It's the court piece of it. And the consolidation is not... And the consolidation is not a small piece of it as well. The fact that you could do multiple parties on the same case.
So if there's like water bills or something.
Yeah, it kind of moves it along. But yes, they still have that quiet title process to go forward and it does take a long time.
It's multiple properties on the same case too.
Right.
They can batch it. It's not just multiple sort of creditors. So that would allow it to move faster kind of broadly as well.
You mean multiple, but.
Like for a portfolio, it would move quicker.
But it would be the same creditor on all the properties otherwise?
No, it wouldn't have to be. I mean, you could do it as a large batch. It's just, it's, to your point though beforehand, it's still gonna, they're still gonna have to reach out to every creditor for all of the properties.
Right, right. So I mean, and the reason that I'm asking that is just, and this really comes to the speakers that we heard earlier, which you all weren't here for, but is that, just for the, just for the public, I feel like there's sort of this pitch being made at the land bank that it's going to be like super fast and it's going to be, and it's not, right? Like, this is a complicated process regard, like, I mean, you know, we definitely had people speaking here who sort of, at least in my interpretation, seemed to feel that they were coming to speak for something that would like quickly get them there, like they can finally get that side yard, you know what I mean? If we just had the land bank. And I think it's important to sort of set expectations with the public. So just, you know, anyway. So the other question I had, really my main one, and I think that'll be it for me, is, well, no, because I do have something about sort of the funding. It's in this process, right? And it, my one concern here, and this is all, again, like hypothetical, right? So I understand that council would approve the transfer of properties to the land bank. So let's say, you know, in, you know, four houses in Hazelwood, and they're going to get transferred to the land bank, but then council doesn't have any say about where, who buys those. So, and we can say, like, the mayor and whatever have, but I don't know who the mayor's going to be in 50 years, and I don't know who's going to be on the land bank board. So who's to say that, you know, those properties don't get sold to, I don't know, like Walnut Capital to build some luxury housing that my community doesn't want or need? So without, I mean, and I don't know how that would work legally, but like, it coming back again to council about who is going to buy that, you know, who is the land bank then going to sell that property to? With the understanding, like everything else we do, like 99% of the time, it's going to be fine. We're going to vote yes and it'll be fine. But every once in a while, there might be, and as the council person, you kind of want to, you want to maintain that leverage for your community, right? In case the land bank does something that the community doesn't want in terms of selling the property.
It's a fair question, council member. I think I'd say a few things, you know, one, underscore the point that the solicitor made in terms of, you know, the city's continued role, right, related to oversight. I think in terms of the way, you know, the transfers could happen, you know, I know now, right, council votes on them sort of related to use, right? So that could be one way in which this, you know, could take, where you're voting on a transfer related to sort of what a set use is. These are going for affordable homeownership. These are going for urban ag. These are going for, you know, commercial development, like along a main street and it's a smaller property. And, you know, I would look to the attorneys in terms of then, you know, if there was a change in use, you know, what that might look like. I am not here, like, as a land bank board member, so, you know, I'm on the board, so I can't speak to the policies and procedures they've adopted. I know, you know, some time ago, I believe they were presented to council. They do have, within their policies and procedures, a prioritization, if you will, related to whom they would sell the properties to, focusing on, you know, low-income homeowners, then-owner occupants, you know, on the way down. So before they would even get to a place where they were selling it to someone that, you know, isn't in those other things to, you know, developer X, right? They would have gone through a number of other things, but I think to the categorization, if you will, of what the transfer was done, it would still need to be within, you know, what the city had agreed to on the original transfer. I'm looking in the, solicitor to disagree with me if that's an incorrect representation, but, yeah.
Yeah, I'll say one of the things that we're looking at, and I'm not saying we're not there yet, but is about deed restrictions that the city could put on any property that it transfers. So we put on deed restrictions so that it therefore can only be used for circumstances through. I agree, I think it really is about the fact that the land bank board has set out the rules on which it will transfer over properties. That said, to your point, like, what I'm, what we're finding out about a lot of these properties is this is the original plan and then, you know, interest rates fall apart, market falls apart, somebody goes bankrupt, like, those are all the things that contribute. So I do think it is the important oversight role, both of council and of the city specifically, to make sure that we're following up on those projects. And certainly before any other project, properties are transferred, you know, you get updates on what's going on with those properties. Have those properties been properly recycled? And are they in a place where we're happy with them? Or are we still sitting on 25 other ones and yet you're asking for another 25, right? And I think that kind of diligence over making sure that these are being moved and they're, because I'll say historically, long before any of us were sitting around this table, that has been one of our problems as I look at this, is that people had grand plans, they acquired lots of property, and then nothing happened to that property. And we've got to make sure that's not happening, that we are really holding people accountable for the plans that they're, they're holding on to. And even if that is to the, you're not getting any more until those are processed, would be my recommendation.
But see, that's what I mean, is I agree with all of that, but if you had that extra step, right, that would give the communities, I mean, through their elected representative, right, the ability to say, hey, you know, this CDC or this whatever is not doing what they're supposed to be doing in our community. Like, they are not, you know, they're buying up all these properties and not fixing them to, the way that we would like to see it done. We don't want them buying any more property until, right? But, but the land bank board doesn't know that. It's the communities that know that. And we can say it, but if we don't have, but if it's not in there with the vote, and I mean, really, it would really, I don't know if there's a legal issue with putting that step in the process, but I mean, it's really only a two-week process, right? With, if you waive rule eight, right? That's two, there's just two weeks added on to just make sure that on the odd case, right, that the community has an issue with one of these sales.
I see. So you're looking for a public hearing before any of this?
No, not necessarily a public hearing, just a vote. Just like, so we vote on it going to the land bank first, right? Like, for the use. And then, I mean, you mentioned before, and then maybe another vote for the sale. You know, after everything's cleared and someone's ready to buy it, like another vote on who's going to buy it.
Oh, I see, the transfer from the land bank. I don't know, yeah. We would have to take a look at that.
Because that would, that would make me feel more comfortable, I think, you know.
I'm a little concerned about where that falls in relation to the land bank regulations and statutes that are set up. So let's, we'll take that under consideration.
Okay. And then I guess the last question was not so much related to the agreement, but more about the funding, right? So I guess there's like 7 million. So I know that I had talked with Sally Stadleman about a possible program, you know, to do just what we've been talking about, getting properties into the hands of local residents, right, who otherwise would not be able to afford to buy a rundown house. And, you know, so to do that stabilization and kind of get the house in a place where then they could get a loan to fix it or whatever they wanted to do with it. But is part of that funding intended to sort of subsidize that kind of work for residents? I mean, because to pay 50 grand to stabilize a, you know what I mean, to stabilize a property that's falling down, I mean, that's not a deal, right? Like, if you, you could just go buy a house, right? So that's, that's not actually helping folks who want to kind of have, you know, take their first shot at flipping a property or something like that. Do you know what I mean? Who, like, to build their own wealth in lower-income communities.
Yeah. I know there's two of the land bank board members here. I'm not sure what, you know, the budget that they adopted, you know, was or contemplates related to that. You know, through the redevelopment authority, there are certainly, you know, programs that could fall in line, you know, when we think about OMPGH that we recently launched, et cetera, that can help with that, coupled with, you know, 203K, like, you know, homebuyer renovation loans and other lending partners that we're bringing to the table. And we'll put in a shameless plug that we're soliciting additional banking partners now if there's anyone watching who wants to respond to that call. But, you know, I think it's a combination of things, you know, whether it needs to come out of that 7 million or else. Otherwise, it is a goal I think we all have with properties that, you know, are in the public portfolio and we would like to see that happen.
Yeah. Because, I mean, I, and again, like I said, there's a rule for everyone, and the CDCs are doing great work. I mean, I'm obviously have my head in Greater Hazelwood. They're doing great work, but there are also folks who wish that they too could kind of get in on this, you know, on this property, you know, stuff that's going on in the neighborhood and there doesn't feel like an avenue to do that, right? To just buy it from the city is just, sounds beyond complicated. Not that it is, but it just feel, you know, and, and they're sort of feeling, it's like, everything just goes to the CDCs through the URA and it would be nice if there was a subsidized way.
No, we agree completely, and we are looking into that, of ways that we can actually keep these properties, properties that aren't, not about the land bank, but that would stay with the city and we would be able to kind of get them to potentially with deed restrictions for affordable housed buyers who would buy them for cheap, right? And then be able to get a loan to invest in the renovation, right? Because if you buy it for low enough, right, you can contemplate that it's actually, once it is fixed up, they'll be able to get a loan to be able to renovate it and kind of be able to live there, owner-occupied restrictions, those kind of things. So we are exploring that right now and hope to have a plan on that as well. And couple with some of the URA funding streams that are out there as well. But I think that sometimes is going to be the best way, is the fact is that either the land bank or the city sells them for a pretty low amount and then someone can get a loan for the renovation piece of it all. At the same time, I would like it that the city and the land bank sell things that have a good envelope, right? A decent roof, that the walls are in decent shape so that we make sure that those properties don't fall kind of farther behind the.
Yeah, I mean, that would be nice, I guess, is that stabilization piece. It would be nice if that could sort of be done, right? So that we aren't selling people properties that are, in the end, just too much, you know, it's just too much project.
Too much to do. I agree completely.
Okay, I think that's all I have, so, thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. I first want to thank you all for being here today. I want to thank Councilwoman Gross for her work initially in 2014, 2013, 14, passing, you know, taking the charge of passing this bill and the members of, the current members of the land bank board from council, including Councilwoman Wilson, Councilwoman Lovell, Reverend Burgess. Because I think that this is like the number one issue that could help Pittsburgh grow our population, grow our tax base to be able to provide greater services to the public and residents and visitors and probably one of the number one things holding us back as a city, as a mid-sized city. So I'm really, really glad that we're here today. And I just have a couple of questions. This first one, I don't know who at the table can answer this, and if it's another council member, then that's fine too, but I note that the previous agreement only provided a path for the land bank to transfer property to the city, and this agreement allows for the city to finally transfer property to the land bank. We've all known that the cities had thousands and thousands of prop, why, does anyone know why that was the case? Okay, just wanted to ask the question. I'm glad we're finally correcting that and it's an important piece and a zillion details that we're here to discuss today. I was wondering, I've heard a lot about the Senator Fontana bill at the state level. Can you explain to me and to maybe anyone listening in what that actually does or how that interacts with what we're dealing with today?
There are others in the room far, far more versed in the bounds of Myrtle, if you will, but it would really help us, you know, related to getting clear title through the sheriff's sale process rather than treasurer's sale in a more expedited manner through the land bank for new acquisitions. So it would be anything that they wanted to acquire, you know, once that went through and was in place, as opposed to, you know, what we're talking about now, right? Which is the, you know, and I'm sure the solicitor shudders at the thought of us acquiring any more properties. But, you know, what we're talking about now is really, you know, bringing all the tools to bear as it relates to the thousands of properties we already own.
Yeah, okay. So less urgent than I first thought. I was thinking that that would be necessary to make this functional, but as I understand it further, it can be, whenever it passes is fine because it's going to be a kind of a problem we're dealing with down the line, not immediately. Okay.
Just to, in a lot of cities, the land bank is used as a way to acquire other properties. And again, for us, that hasn't been our first priority, right? Our first priority is the backlog that we already own. But if you were looking to acquire other properties, that bill would be very helpful for that.
Yeah, and yeah, certainly something we want to think about in the future or be acting on in the future. And I also see opportunity for this, everything we're talking about today, particularly the land bank with like individual parcels that aren't, you know, side lots, but they're also not major, major properties, to interact with our community land trusts. Has anyone done, conducted the thought experiment of like thinking through, all the way through, like how that, how those two can interact or what that looks like? Or is it as simple as, hey, you know, Oakland Land Trust wants to use the land bank process to purchase a property and then deed it so it's permanently affordable land as people are building homeownership?
I think it can be that simple. Yeah, I know, I saw it here earlier, but.
People are chomping, I see that audience member is chomping at the bit to actually, you know, want to speak to some of these issues.
Yeah, I think it can be that simple, you know, and to the earlier conversation with Councilmember Warwick related to the, you know, the land bank's sort of prioritization as it relates to DISPO. I don't believe at the time that that was originally conceived. You know, we were fortunate to have, you know, land trusts that were up and performing at the level that they are now. So, you know, I would leave that to that body if that's something they want to talk about, but, you know, I think it can be as simple as you said.
Okay. And then, you know, I was thinking, I had council approval kind of to make a different point, but I think Councilwoman Warwick really got me thinking about the fact that this, you know, as is always the case, this council and this mayor will not necessarily be the same council and mayor 20, 50 years in the future. So I'm certain that even as we get going, once, you know, we're disposing of properties at a rapid pace, maybe not as rapid as some members think, but, or some audience members were thinking today, but, but, you know, certainly I'm sure we'll have to tweak it and make changes. But I really am sort of wrestling with this idea of council approval even for the first one because I just don't want to slow down the process, which is going to be a different calculation, say 10 years from now, when maybe this, the speed is less important than the, than the intention of the end buyer or user, right? So right now, speed and alacrity is like my priority and I really would hate to slow it down with even one council approval because it was my, I don't know, it was my, it was my understanding, and Councilwoman Gross, correct me if I'm wrong, that the original intent of the land bank kind of back in 2014 was complete removal from council oversight and, and the need for, you know, taking this completely out of council's hands and putting into a separate entity to sort of speed up the process. I might be wrong about that, but.
Well, the state statute said that the moment city council voted, which we did in April 2014 before you run council, that, that vote automatically incorporated the land bank as an independent nonprofit. For every land bank in every municipality of the state, is the way I understand it, that the statute has that embedded in it. So it did become an independent, like the city clerk, I watched her mail it to Harrisburg, and that that was, our vote was the act of incorporating it as an independent nonprofit. But it, of course, was incorporated with zero properties. So city council has always had control over these properties.
So, I mean, I still, I'm still wrestling with it. I, I do, I am kind of in a. So, I mean, I still, I'm still wrestling with it. I do, I am kind of in agreement that, I guess for now, having one, two-week process at least baked in here allows for, at the very least, it coming to the council members' attention. And if anything needs to happen, they can, they can, you know, raise a red flag. I do still worry about a little bit too much involvement of council over a process that we just really want to speed up for the sake of the city, but I hope that doesn't come to pass, and I hope I'm wrong about that, and I hope we can just kind of move these along and approve as we do a lot of other, you know, disposing of properties, of side yard sales and others. So. But certainly, you know, take what Councilwoman Warwick was saying seriously about, you know, thinking about this, this end user, and perhaps we have to think about that either now, or as we see things play out. So thank you again for being here. That's the extent of my questions, I believe. Yep, thanks.
Do my roll. So, Councilwoman, thank you. Councilwoman Wilson?
Thank you, thank you. So thanks, everyone, for being here. Thank you, Chair, for hosting this. And thank you, Madam President, for getting this to the table so we can talk about this in the, in the near future. I'm looking forward to, to a vote, you know, in terms of getting this, getting this through, getting this accomplished. I think it's been, it's been quite some time since this was proposed, so. And this was sent over from OMB, right? And so this is, this is one of the mayor's initiatives? Can you, Kyle, can you comment on that?
Yeah, I was looking at Director Ghulak. I can't remember how, if we sent it over through Finance or from OMB, but it was something that came up in a conversation, you know, early last year, in a discussion with Finance and Law, on the need to, you know, amend the co-op to allow for, you know, what we've talked about here today. Yep, so we sent it over, you know, you know, last year, and, you know, are excited to, you know, be engaged in the process now.
Definitely, because sitting on the Land Bank, we're, you know, looking at, you know, the possibility of what's, you know, what can be accomplished. And then you add the funding in that was allocated by this council and the mayor. And, you know, it's just exciting times to see what's possible. I think we had a lot of public speakers here that they were speaking to, you know, what land, most, I would say, you know, 95% were talking about land for, like, food justice issues. And so that's important. But also, we did have a couple of speakers that, you know, talked about the vacant abandoned property structures that could be fixed, you know, blighted neighborhoods that have happened. So that said, whenever it was sent over to council, I just want to walk through this because I think it's important. What was sent over was, you know, was an authorization for us to allow the mayor to enter into the agreement. So I was on earlier, I was paying attention to, although I couldn't see the slides, I was paying attention to what was being said. Now I see the slides in front of me, I see that this is, you know, we had this flow chart here. Was this the part you went over, Kyle?
Yeah.
Okay. So it is the intent for, okay, so to be clear, sorry, I have to back up a second. What was sent over was just the typical, the regular agreement, the original agreement. And so the amended version is what you all would do once it got to, on your side. You would...
I'm not sure if I follow the question exactly. If you read the resolution, yeah, what did?
I can be more clear.
Yeah.
And, you know, Councilperson Gross, you could correct me if I'm wrong, but what was sent over was just the regular agreement, the agreement that didn't have an amendment in it. That's what's on Legistar. So what's on Legistar is just...
Is that a rec? How do you?
Yeah. Yeah, but what was sent over, in terms, I mean, typically, we don't actually get the, we don't actually get the agreement, right? So, what's that?
Do you need it?
Yeah, I'll take it. But currently, what's on Legistar is just the regular version.
What's regular?
The normal version, like it's not the amended version, the original.
That's the--
Yeah, what, this isn't on--
That's the bill.
Yeah.
And the bill is on Legistar.
Yeah.
Yep, the bill is on Legistar.
Okay.
Okay.
So for clarity, the public hasn't seen the amended version. Is that correct?
Would you like me to have it read into the record?
I'm just, I mean, this is just for process sake.
I'd be happy to do that.
I think it's like--
The actual amendment to the agreement, you mean, or the legislation itself?
No, the legislation describes that we would--
Yeah. I don't know if the amended version, the Second Amendment in draft form, has been uploaded to Legistar yet or not. I know it's been shared with council members through the briefings, and then I see you all have a copy of it now, but I don't know that that's been uploaded to Legistar.
Okay, so the agreement--
The resolution itself contemplates authorizing the mayor, you know, the URA, the Land Bank, to enter into an amendment of the co-op agreement in a form approved by the city solicitor, you know, for, and then it enumerates sort of the purposes, but, yeah.
So I see, so we are, so here, for this post agenda, we're talking about the amended version, which is what we have in front of us, right?
I have a copy, if you need a copy of it. So, it was introduced in May of 2022 without any attachments? All right. Okay, pardon me.
Oh, I'm just trying to make clear, but just so the public knows what the amendments would be, because, I mean, typically, we don't have to have it, just like in the park stacks, whenever we wanted to audit the PPC, there wasn't, you know, there wasn't all the agreements on, every time there's an agreement that we enter into with the PPC, it's not like it's on the, it's on Legistar. Every time we have an agreement, we don't see that on Legistar. I just want to be--
I was going to say--
Yeah.
Once they're finalized, they're available on the city controller website.
Yeah, once they're finalized.
Once they're finalized and entered into, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I just want to be clear, because like, when we start, when we bring this back to the table, we're just going to be going into, you know, authorizing the mayor to enter into the agreement, and possibly there could be amendments. Is that, is that something you foresee, that council members will make amendments to the agreement before the mayor enters into this agreement phase?
I would look to council if they're going to offer amendments. I don't know the answer to that question, but that's the way that it would play out as a part of the legislative process.
Solicitor, how would that work out?
So, I think, you know, Councilman, you already stated it. I mean, we often, right, have bills in front of you that are about approving the, an agreement that council approves, but then it goes to the law department, and to the city, and to the executive branch to create that agreement and to enter into that agreement. And then that agreement becomes public as soon as it's signed on the process. So I don't think this is any different, except that, I mean, I guess the difference is, we don't usually show you a copy of the agreement before--
Right, that's what I'm describing.
--the resolution. So I think this is more exposure to the actual agreement than it normally is during the process.
Exactly, yeah.
So, yeah, I think council has seen actually more about the sausage making than it normally happens in, in the way that the city conducts its business.
Right. And I think that's good, and I think that, that's what I was trying to describe, that currently on Legistar, it is the original version, but here, we're talking about these amendments, which ultimately were, you know, allowing--
And I think the original version's probably getting people tied up, because, right, this--
I'm sure there's multiple original versions.
There was the original, original from 2014, right? And so this is an amendment, and this contemplates an amendment to the agreement that was originally set in 2014. And, and I'd say that the resolution is somewhat robust in talking about what kind of those amendments will be, even if it is not a whole copy of the agreement, because we don't normally attach agreements to the resolutions.
So, so legally, can we direct the mayor to change the agreement prior to entering into the agreement process?
That, I mean, you already are directing the mayor in the bill to change it to the agreement, right? Because it was already passed in 2014, and we're making those changes. I think, is that your question?
Yeah.
I don't know if I'm--
I just want to understand that. Yeah. Okay, so then, the intent is, is to, you know, do these, allow the Land Bank to transfer the properties, actually to request the properties that they would like to have transferred. And do we, Kyle, do we know how many at a time that we would see?
I, no. I don't know that. I know there, there's, you know, discussions on, you know, a few, you know, two or three dozen, but I don't know, you know, initially, and those are conversations that I know you're having at the board level with the Land Bank and the team, in terms of what those would look like, you know. But I, there's nothing within the agreement that sort of lays out this many or that many, if that's where you're going, so.
Yeah, I was just curious on, you know, what the initial plan was from the Land Bank in terms of, you know, how many do you foresee?
I mean, I think, I'm speaking a bit out of turn here, but to get started on something so that we can learn, right? Like, you know, we have this tool here, I think you've heard all of us talk about sort of the promise of it, its ability to fill a need within, you know, the tools that we have to bring that tool to bear, but we haven't used it before, right? So, so there is an importance to be able to begin to see, you know, what we learn through the process, and what changes we may need to make, I think, as we go along, so.
Okay. Yeah, I think that, you know, in terms of the, you know, this yellow part here, where the property transfer request is presented to council for approval, I mean, I think that's, if that's the step that would, you know, move things along, I think that would be, you know, that would be typical in terms of our, how, you know, we still maintain power in terms of, you know, getting to authorize whether or not that property's going to be sent to the Land Bank. In terms of anything further, I'm hesitant to really, you know, micromanage all those different properties in terms of, just like you said, I think I actually heard the comment in terms of, you know, would there be a public hearing then for that? Like, how do we gather all the information to understand that? Really, what I'm looking forward to, you know, some, on the Land Bank Board, is to be a part of that equitable process, so that, you know, people who enter into, you know, possible, that disposition process, that they have a fair shot, and that something like, you know, Walnut Capital wouldn't, wouldn't never get, you know, a property, you know, from the Land Bank on that level, where there would be, you know, because we have it built in there in the disposition process, where, you know, there's this grading system where, you know, it is community-driven. I mean, it's solely CDC-driven currently, and to expand that to individual private owners would be the future. And to give, you know, criteria around, you know, that disposition process on who, where that property would be offloaded into the right hands, I think would be great. But in terms of market rate development, I think that's, that would get the least amount of points. I know that gets the least amount of points right now, and that this whole process is geared towards increasing the amount of affordable housing, and so that children don't have to walk past, you know, vacant abandoned property when they're, you know, celebrating the walk to school day. So I think it's just a real tragedy, you know, the more that, the more that we, council gets involved, in terms of trying to stall the process that can take place, how we can really get the $7 million on board and use that, those funds to, to, you know, to make the Land Bank work for everyone. So I'm a firm believer that we should be acting as soon as possible and take a vote on this, so that we can make sure that, you know, another child doesn't have to walk past a vacant abandoned property, that they don't have to. We all, we all know the stats on that, and we all know the numbers. Right now, in terms of even stabilizing properties, we have 1,700 properties that are, you know, ready to be demoed. So we could go in there actively stabilize some of these properties and be able to sell to the right buyers. I'm also curious, in terms of the $7 million, do we have to finalize this agreement before we can authorize the $7 million to be spent at the Land Bank?
I'd say there's not, is laws positioned that there's not much point in going forward with the $7 million until this agreement is done? Because really, the $7 million contemplates the process of using some of those properties that are currently owned by the city and putting those through the Land Bank. That's what the--
So that's why this is so important. It's so important, this is so important to get this done, because the $7 million is really what's going to get everyone working together, where it's the mayor's office, well, the law department, the city, the tri-party agreement.
Right.
You know, all three parties, where we all agree upon the process, and everyone is taking a part of, you know, what's possible. So there was another point in there, because that money, that $7 million, is what we can use for stabilization, for clearing title. And also, the next step would be to, you know, activate the, the, the three taxing body agreement, so that that three taxing body agreement can be finalized, so then everyone's on the same page there, you know, how we're going to, you know, collect taxes that way as well, or how we're not going to collect taxes. But I'm, I'm definitely interested in moving this forward, and I appreciate, you know, any council members that want to, you know, really move this forward as quickly as possible. But that little point in the beginning there, I think is important, because even recently, I had a discussion with OMB about how council can't direct the mayor to do certain things. So I just wanted to be clear on, if there are amendments made to the, to the, you know, to this agreement, can council, under the charter, direct the mayor in terms of the agreement?
So the executive branch always acts upon the authority under the bill, right? So whatever the legislation says on, so when, say, normally you pass legislation that says you enter into an agreement to spend X amount of money to build a bridge, or something along those lines, the things that are in the legislation are what direct the executive branch to create an agreement that conforms to that legislation.
Okay. Yeah, because I saw, this is getting in the weeds here, but I saw some legislation that said directs and authorizes. So this would say authorizes to, you know, allow the mayor to enter into the agreement. So, okay, great. All right, well, thanks for coming today. Looking forward to getting this done.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson. Councilman Cockell, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I do. Thank you for being here today. I guess my first question is, why isn't the Land Bank here? Okay, well, maybe one of you can answer this question for me, since the Land Bank isn't here. Is the Land Bank going to need more capacity? And let me just ask you this, what is the salary at the Land Bank? How many people work there now, currently? I know Sally is a director, but--
She's not a director.
Well, what is she?
She's a manager.
Manager. But, so, how many people work at the Land Bank?
There's a Land Bank, I'm going to look to the board members to confirm that I'm saying this correctly, but there's, there's a Land Bank manager, and then there's another staff member who works to support that effort as well.
One support staff.
And then there's, there's an administrative agreement with the URA, you know, where they're able to also then kind of tap into some of those other support services that the authority can offer. I think, you know, to the ability, they're going to need to outsource some of the stuff when we think about the title work, et cetera. So it won't all be done, you know, in-house, but I understand sort of the gist of the question, but to your point, I'm not here representing the Land Bank.
Got you. So the idea, once the Land Bank, providing this bill passes, once the Land Bank is in its new role, whether it be one staffer, or two or three, I don't imagine the board members get involved in the day-to-day operations as to what properties we need to acquire and things of that nature. So to me, it just seems like one staff member just isn't enough to really get rolling. We have to spend $7 million in two years, and that will be spent how? Once the Land Bank can openly acquire these properties in the fashion that we want them to.
I think to what Councilmember Wilson just said, you know, there's the ability to spend a lot of it on clearing title for the properties that are going over there, stabilization, you know, the potential--
When you say clearing title, you mean attorney fees?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Attorney and court fees, right?
Got it, got it.
You know, the process that the solicitor and Director Ghulak, you know, mentioned earlier. You know, staff, you know, in addition to then, you know, the potential for programs like Councilmember Warwick, you know, brought up, you know, should the board and the team decide that that makes sense for them.
So the Land Bank is not going to get into re-stabilizing properties? They're not going to spend that money on, say, boarding the windows up, right? They're not gonna spend that money on, say, boarding the windows up, right?
We, yeah.
Please.
It's okay, okay. So this was gonna be part of my remarks to even address Council Warwick's concern. One of the challenges with the land bank is by state law, the minute the land bank acquires a property, we have to maintain and stabilize such property. We have to cut the grass, we have to remove the snow, we have to board it up if that's what's necessary. So the land bank will not take on property that we don't know that we can sell on the back end, right? So there's not too cumbersome for anyone to have to put $100,000 into it, right? Because we have to stabilize that property, and we have to maintain it for its entirety until it is sold.
So we stabilizing it, meaning the land bank part of money or the city of Pittsburgh?
The, using the dollars that the city is gonna transfer to the land bank, so the 7 million you're referring to.
Okay, so we would be using that part of money to stabilize, much like the U R A does?
Yeah, once, once the land bank owns it, they, they have holding costs.
I'm just, I'm just thinking here, like, you know, I know attorney fees can get expensive, but $7 million, you know, and clearing titles, and I know it takes a while.
Sure, but yeah, they're holding costs for the portfolio.
That money will be put into stabilizing, maybe a new roof, whatever, get it in selling condition.
Regular maintenance, which is why we still hold the property reserve.
Right, right.
Because right now, they can't, they don't have the ability to do that.
Got it, got it, I get it, I get it. I just wanted to make sure it's that part of money using to stabilize homes, which we could spend very quickly, um, like that, if, uh, you know, we make the bad, any bad decisions on what to stabilize and what not to. So it's gonna be an interesting process. This right here is a list of every city-owned lot, lot in my district. Okay, Councilwoman Gross's persuasion, uh, on a project that's not related to this, believe it or not. We wanted to know every, so I had an intern and some of my staff for four months look up every single lot that the city owned. And here's what we found. And first of all, I, I never know what's owned by the city and what's not. We drive by, people get complain about the place next door. I don't, I don't do that research for them. I, I, I don't know who owns it. A lot of times they do. So what I found was this, 1,400, almost 1,500 city-owned lots in my district. What we found was a good majority of those are kind of like, can never build on. They're just, just spaces that you really can't build on. Maybe if it were Lawrenceville, they would find a way to build on it, but not in my district. It's just like on the side of hills that you just can't build on. And so, so I would suggest this. We have, it just sounds bad, we have 17,000 vacant lots. I'm telling you right now, of these 1,500 in my district, I'm sure I could clean up four or 500 of them that are not buildable. And we just incorporate them, a lot of these are joined to our greenways. Just make them part of the greenway, right? Get them off our list. They're not an abandoned or a, a property that the city is neglecting or owning. So, so I was really shocked to find that out, that, you know, it's really not a, a matter of just all these abandoned lots that people left. Maybe my district's different. I, I understand the differences in, in every district. Another thing I found was very few city-owned properties with structures on them in my district, very few. I can't, in fact, only a handful, believe it or not. So the one I have scheduled to demo, because it's just no questions about it, it's gotta come down on Broadway. But, but there's very few city-owned houses in my district that are just sitting there, city-owned, whether we acquired it through, you know, taxes or however we, we got them. So, so that too is not a, um, big burdensome in my district anyway. So there are some structures, I'm sure, but I can't tell you which ones they are. But here's what I really want to talk to you about. Here's, here's really what I wanted to give to one of, whether it be the U R A, I don't think that's my avenue. Whether it be you, Jennifer, but I was thinking the land bank coming in here, but after listening to your remarks, I'm thinking maybe it's you. So talk to me about a dead-end property, okay? First of all, let me give you an example. I have one in my district. People have been calling for two years, the weeds are growing and, you know, it's privately owned. The fellow who lived there died, unfortunately. No heirs, nobody to take care of the property. Of course, it's going back on taxes. There's nobody to pay for it, the property tax and whatever else is involved there. So what happens? What, what avenue can I take?
So we could put it into the treasure sale.
Right.
But doing things like that is how we ha, ended up with a portfolio of like 14,000 properties. So now we only take those properties into treasure sale that we know has a buyer on the end. Not saying that that can't happen into, in the future, it would be nice, because there's a lot of those in the city where people walked away, abandoned them, because the, it wasn't worth catching up on taxes because the property is worth, not, not worth that much. But maybe somebody else could do something with it. But we won't take it because then we have to maintain it, which we, thank God, we have ARPA, because that actually gave us a, a little bit of a leg up. But prior to that, we had like $500,000 to maintain 14,000 properties, which is not happening. So, but in the future, if we have these other pipelines that we can start to move properties through, then we can take properties like that in the city inventory with the hopes of selling it to a neighbor or someone else that wants to do something with it.
Okay.
But until then, there's really not much we, we can do.
Okay, so, so, uh, again, it's not city structures on my properties, it's not properties that are just sitting there that could be built on. My biggest issue is dead-end properties. I don't, I don't know where the owner is. We don't know, we, 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 we find them, we send them notice. But Jennifer, let me just tell you what I did in my own personal life, which I felt was very effective, and I was going to say to the land bank if they were here today, this is what I'd like you to do, okay? Same way, property across the street from me, I was like, what, who owns this property? Nobody, nothing there for years. Looked into it, um, and it was really simple. You have to be willing to do a little homework, and you have to be willing, and you probably have done this, is probably what you're referring to. So I paid an attorney $5,000 to get it, where they put notice out there, any heirs to this property, you need to come forth, or it's going to be put up for sale. Fine, I did that. Now, always when we put that money up, as if the land bank were to put that money up, whoever purchased that property pays you back. I, I never lost a dime. Oh, I lost was my time. I did this with two separate properties, both went to, was it sheriff's sale or treasurer's sale in that case? I, I can't remember. I think it was sheriff's sale.
Probably sheriff's.
So both went to sheriff's sale. Both people outbid what I was willing to pay for it, and then it, it fell into their hands. Now, I, so, so I put it on the tax roll, just simply by paying an attorney $5,000 to take the necessary steps. Now, I get it, we don't want to end up with 14,000 properties, but the way it was set was an upset cost, meaning what you owe in taxes, what you owe utilities, and that's what the bidding starts at. I think one particular property was $18,000, right?
Right.
We started $18,000. The guy went to 40-some-thousand, it was too rich for my budget, so I, I backed out. But the bottom line is, it's, it's on. I got refunded as soon as he purchased the property. I got refunded my money, no sweat, everything's good. We got it back on the tax roll. Why can't we do that? Why can't the land, I was hoping the land bank would say, absolutely, give me the property address, and let's start on this tomorrow. Within six months, we'd have this thing on the market, affordable, by bid. It's not, you know, it's of course the highest bid, it's, you know, um, so, so why, why don't we just do that to these dead-end properties? If I could get paid back like I did for the,
Councilman, we're happy to look into that for you. So we're happy to do that.
So I didn't know if you knew that or you proceeded there.
We can use sheriff's sale as well.
You know, to me, it's like, it's on the market. We, we're, we're about, and, and I get it, we, we want to identify places for affordable housing. We want to do that. But we, most of all, we want to get them back on the tax roll, and we don't want the people next to them complaining that the grass is six feet to, tall and there's squatters in there. So to me, like, I almost want to do it myself, you know, because I know I'm gonna get reimbursed, but I don't want to go through the homework. And I was hoping the land bank, especially in its newfound position with a little bit of cash on hand, could do that. It's just a simple thing.
Councilman, I think that's a perfect thing for us to be doing. So, um, we're happy to look into it. If you want to send us a list of the properties you've got in your district, um, and again, I think it's, the, the pergam, the, well, the perfect,
1,400.
One is, I, I definitely think we need to look at the greenway, because once it gets into the greenway,
Let's just incorporate those, please. You know, that's the easiest thing for us to do. That should be like, and that 17,000, I'll knock off four or 500 properties, just in my district alone.
Well, it also doesn't make sense when you have greenway over here and greenway over here and a parcel in the middle. I mean, it, it would make sense to have it all contiguous.
So let me ask you this, Jennifer. So saying how I put these two properties on the market, right? Otherwise, they, they would have just sat there for years. How did, what happens at a dead-end property? Does it, do they just sit there for multiple, multiple year, years and it eventually? If, if we're not proactive in putting it on the market ourselves by paying an attorney, or I was hoping to do it in-house, actually, you know?
So a number of years ago, back when we were kind of more aggressively going after treasurer's sale, those properties kind of got caught in the treasurer's sale process.
Right.
But once, um, you know, about eight years ago, they stopped doing that process, that's where we kind of ended up with this problem. But you were correct, like, we are better off doing it then, than in some time when it falls into our hands, because at that point, it's gonna be, you know, it's gonna be a demolition project, and so we're gonna lose more housing stock. The earlier we can kind of address that issue, I think the better off we are.
Take it from me, a general contractor, this particular house I'm talking about, it was on the news last week about it, because all the neighbors are complaining. And I told them, it's not our property, it's really not our responsibility, but, you know, be it as it may, we, we got it cleaned up and, you know, gutters were falling off. Because this is such a beautiful home and a beautiful neighborhood, I personally went up there and re-hung the gutters, because I know that place is dilapidating by the day, with that water running down the facial board and into the house. So I'm like, maybe I'll buy it, I don't know, but, but I thought somebody, just to keep it, you know, sellable. So, so, yeah, I, so, so we don't do that. We don't aggressively go after a property and say, look, we're gonna put, whether it's our attorney or an outside attorney, put it out there for notice, pay them whatever they need paid, and get this place back on the market. We just wait for it to come to us over many years.
Well, yeah, I, I will say this, we are looking to set up that. So once we get everything kind of more cleaned up, that's our next goal.
This could be your first property. It's ready to go. It is ready to go.
And I think also if we have issues, you know, homeowners who are disregarding P L I S A L citations and also not paying their bills, like, those are the, or property owners, could be commercial, like, those are the kind of things that I think we want to make sure we can proactively attack.
And, and to what you said before, Jennifer, we don't want to accumulate thousands and thousands of more properties, but this is just to get it on the market. And once it's on the market, the upset cost, usually back taxes and utilities, whatever they owe P A, American Water, whatever, it's, it's cheap. And if we had to acquire it, that's great, then we take that 7 million and that, that's nothing. That's, it's, increases our coffers, okay? We could then sell that property. One of the, one of you could sell that property, like that, let me tell you. So at a, at a for-profit cost, I would think. I mean, it's, so if they end up in our, in, in our lap, that's good. That's a good thing. Especially these ones that have no claim, have no, no owners, uh, because usually that cost is much less than the actual value of the property. If it's, if it's $100,000 in taxes, then we walk away from it. We don't want anything to do with it. It's somebody else's problem, I guess. So, okay. I just wanted to make sure. I would love to pursue this one property. I think it's a prime example. We can get this thing on the market like that. I've done it myself, so it's easy. I was thinking and hoping the land bank would take that rule, but you can direct me, whether I go through you, Jennifer, or the land bank. Just tell me who to go to, because I'll walk you through it. It's, it's a really easy process. Costs a little bit of money upfront, but you get refunded, you know, it doesn't cost you anything. That's the beauty of it. So, um, what's the difference between a treasurer's sale and sheriff's sale?
So, seeing that I'm the treasurer. So treasurer's sale only applies to municipal liens. So we don't deal with, like, construction liens. We don't deal with other tax liens from other municipalities. It's only city, city liens, demolition, clean and lean, water, anything of that nature. There could be other liens or attachments on the property, and we, but we can't quiet those, we don't deal with those. But if you go to those sheriff's sale, that, that's where those other liens can be added to the upset price.
Sorry, the other benefit of the land bank, the land bank can utilize sheriff's sale. And at sheriff's sale, you have all your liens removed, as well as the land bank can come in and doesn't get outbid. The land bank has the ability to come in and say, we actually want to, these 12 properties here, and it will go to the land bank. So that's the other benefit of it, that we can, you could do what you're doing with those.
So we don't have to go through a bidding process?
Correct.
Right, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah, they have the ability to, 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 Councilmember Strasberg's question earlier, you know, and what we're able to do with sheriff's sale, to Councilmember Lovell's point, um, that affords them that ability. So it, it could go the route that you're talking about, where it's just to kind of prompt action from someone, but if it's properties that, there's, you know, folks that we want to actually go through the land bank process then to ensure that it's an affordable home or a neighborhood resident or whatever the case may be, um, you know, then the land bank can, can step in and say, no, we want that, and, and.
Okay, of course, I'm gonna support the bill. Everybody seems to think it's a great thing. It'll free the land bank up to do whatever they need to do. I'm all for that. Um, but I'm just looking, every district is different. That's why I'm stressing, for me, it's not about vacant structures. It's not about empty lots. It's about dead-end properties. And I know, I think the train of thought would be amongst all of you, would be focused on the city, city properties, city-owned inventory. But this is the same thing, you're getting it back on the tax roll, and it's not paying, spending, you're not spending any money. You're getting refunded if, if it doesn't end up with us. So, um, I would like to pursue that. I'd like the commitment from somebody this week, and be like, let's look at it and let's get this property, this one in particular moving. I would say in my district, it's more dead-end properties than it is people complaining about a empty structure or just a vacant lot that's over-weeded. So, 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 yeah, I'll be in support. Um, just looking for some, some direction there. Yeah, so, uh, so that's it, um, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cogell. Mr. Lovell?
Thank you. I really don't have questions, because, but I will, what I will try to do is very briefly try to speak to the actual intent of the bill itself, because we've talked about a lot of stuff, not necessarily the actual resolution that we're here for. So as I understand it, and this is sort of matification to publics, the intent here is to amend, to instruct the administration to bring the Fourth Amendment to the tri-party agreement that allows for the city to actually be able to move land into the land bank. Correct? It's really that simple?
Correct.
Okay. Now, once that happens, um, just for members, it, it's my expectation that a number of things could happen. You, looking at your list of 1,400, could say, hey, I really want these 12 to be permanent greenway, right? And you could instruct the city to move legislatively, instruct the city to move property into the land bank. Once you do that, this body will still have to approve that transfer of property into the land bank. The administration could also say, hey, as part of the Bedford Hill redevelopment, we think it'd be important to move these six that could be home, affordable homeownership opportunities that will complement another development, comes through council, goes into the land bank, and we know what the intent on the end user is. And as well as CDCs could also come and say, hey, these have been sitting here for a very long time. We'd like to move these. To Councilwoman Strasberg's point, does it occur overnight? No. But it is, does it, is it more expeditious than any other process? Yes. It's almost, well, it's almost impossible to say exactly, because each property is so different.
So about two weeks?
No, it could be more than that.
Well, tell me, I want to know. I mean, if you could use that as a talking point, I want to know what the, what the number is.
I'll get it to you.
Oh, I want to make it public, though.
I, I will, I will find out, and I will make it public.
I'm not trying to put you on this, but I'm trying to ask anybody. I'll, I'll wait till it's my turn.
Now, now, I mean, let's not trip my train of thought. So, no, it's all good. So that's the intent around all of this. To some of the councilperson's concern about the property on the back end, the land bank has adopted policies and procedures that sort of specifies, here's how we're prioritizing the end user for this. So low-income, affordable homeownership, someone else who's already a homeowner, greenway, that sort of thing. And in addition to that, there's a built-in public process that the land bank has to go through. It has to provide public notice any times it acquires property. Um, it has to meet with the planning department, is this in line with a registered community plan? They have to receive community input that, yes, this is what we want to see happen. So there are all those things that are sort of built in, as well as should the land bank actually then say, we're gonna, we're selling here, there's also an appeal process, um, that I think is maybe three parts, that where you can then actually appeal that decision of the land bank board. So there's just a lot sort of built in so that you're not ending up in a bad result. So that's just more so for members' clarification as well. I, again, I don't really don't have questions, so, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Lovell. Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you. Thank you all for being here, and thank you, Councilwoman Gross, for all the work you did on this. And, um, mine is more, a, a few comments first I'm gonna make. I know Councilman Wilson likes being on the land bank. I can't wait to put myself back on the land bank, so I can have a seat too. Because I actually put him on my, where my seat was, and that's how he's on there. Um, because I actually put him on my, where my seat was, and that's how he's on there. Um, I won't really do that, but I'm just saying, I think that it's, it's a conversation. The reason I care so much is because I was on the land bank because we have so many properties in our district. And I loved what Councilwoman Work had to say, that, you know, she's worried about what happens down the road and down the line, and she's worried about what council's voice will be. And, I mean, honestly, I'm thinking right about now, you sound like the one that should be president next year because you actually care about council. Um, it's good to hear somebody speak up for council and, and to speak up. Because I tell people all the time, council's voice is the voice of the public. Um, and without our voice, then the public is losing their voice. And you can tell them through community groups that they're going to have a say. You can tell them they're going to be able to acquire property. You can tell them all that stuff. But the bottom line is, our voice has to be, um, a voice of the public that's heard. So, with that said, I just want to go a couple of things. Um, can the land bank meet its obligations in terms of housing without the land bank? How? Can the U R A meet its objectives of using the land, the land bank so aggressively with, by taking, without, aggressively take properties uh, for affordable housing work and things that you want to do? Do you need the land bank? Do you need the land bank to do what you want to do?
I, I think we talked about it earlier. It, the land bank offers some comparative advantages for specific uses that, right now, through the city or through the U R A, we aren't as well-positioned. So, I, I guess the way I'd answer it is to say, we can be more effective related to making opportunities for affordable homeownership available or smaller-scale projects with the land bank, certainly than can we can be without it. Because we can't facilitate those projects very well through the city because of the, the properties having to go to the highest bidder. And for the reasons of, you know, the U R A's adherence to state redevelopment law and our disposition process, you know, it's hard for a single family to come forth and say, oh, we want to buy this home and be, and have it be our, you know, our home, our residence, and have to go through that process. So, it, it really does feel, excuse me, fill a lane that, right now, we aren't able to fill as effectively as I would hope we would, you know, be able to.
So, I, I also want to know, what happens to the land that can't be sold? So, if you're, if you're, you're acquiring the properties that you can sell so that you can get them off and get them moving, what happens to the land that you cannot sell? And how does that?
Who's you in this instance?
Well, you, the U R A, the city, tell me who it is, the land bank? I mean, it seems like it was.
Yeah, I, I, I think Councilmember Lavelle touched on it earlier. The land bank, in, in the way that it's set up, has to be able to maintain the properties that it has, right? They, they aren't, they're moving, you know, actively moving to dispose of the properties that they do have. The solicitor touched on one.
I saw how they disposed of a property. I'll talk about that in my district in a second. Go ahead.
But the solicitor talked about sort of making sure that, you know, the city's doing its job and oversight to, to make sure that they're moving forward in the way that they said. Um, but, you know, they would have to maintain the properties until such time as they sell them.
So, one of the things when we talk about the cost of maintaining the properties, that drives me absolutely insane, is we have all these vacant lots. And for years, I've been saying, why can't we come in, clean up the lot, when we demo a house or something, and use, um, the low growing, I think it's like, uh, yeah, the lomo or the grass that doesn't grow very high, or some kind of covered, cover that absorbs water better, or something that's better for the environment, better for having, for the, for the bottom dollar, that we're not constantly cleaning it up. I've seen nothing happen with that. And we've put, we've put through legislation, we've done all sorts of things. Nothing.
I, I.
So, I really feel like the city could clean up the properties. They don't care to. That's what I feel. For not just any one administration, I would be clear. This has been since I've been here. It's been, we've been trying to address that issue for a long time, because it would cost a lot less. And you could have money to do more things if you would just come in and do it the right way.
Yeah, I'd have to check on what our grass spec is right now from, from demos and, and follow up with you to see where it's at and what ability we have to adjust that. Um, I thought there was a no-mo spec in there. I think that part of the, the, the problem ends up becoming, when it's seeded, you know, there, there's really only certain times of year that grass really takes hold. Um, and we're doing demos all year round, right? So, that'll then facilitate weeds and other things coming in. So, it's something I'd have to look into to get more specific information.
I'd like to know a little bit more about that.
I know Director Gula can speak to some of the changes that we've done with the way in which we maintain properties. You know, last year was the first year that we, that we adopted the land care program. And I think, you know, we learned a lot and, you know, we're looking to make improvements this year and then the year after, so.
Do you want to talk?
Sure. But in that land care program, there's only about 3,000 properties that we're servicing continually. And they're mostly, um, properties that should be in well-trafficked areas and those properties that are on their way to schools so that they're in safe school zones. Um, in which case, but that costs us literally 1.5 million dollars a year for 3,000 properties. And they usually get cycled through, uh, maybe twice a month during the high-growing period. So, in order to maintain, like, 14,000, we need quite a lot more money. So, it's, it's one of those things where, and in the past, we've only had, this is only the second year that we've had a budget like that.
So, the, the properties that we have, the 14,000 that you keep referring to, do you have a list of those?
They're in E P P and I can circulate.
Okay, yeah. Could you please? Could you please?
Sure.
Okay, I'd like to see the list. All right. And then, um, the CDCs, when I hear you talking about the C, my concern is that we have one CDC in my district, another one I turned into the IRS and the FBI. And you're asking me now to trust them, not that group, but a group like a CDC with the properties in my district. And I tell the people this all the time. I've had people go to jail for what they did in my district in terms of land and housing. And so, I'm always extra cautious, because some of my neighborhoods have really paid a severe price for what happened to them. So, I'm always going to be cautious. I'm never going to just trust blindly about, you know, anybody trying to take control of the land. Um, I remember one time this woman in Ferrywood, um, she was actually friends with the, um, your pastor friend, I can't think of his name. Um, Ms. Nixon, she used to always say, it's the land juice issue, honey. It's the land juice. They want the land. And, I mean, that's, since I've been here, that's all it's, and I thought she was crazy, because every conversation was about this land. And, I mean, I wish she would live into this day so I can say to her, I finally got it. I finally got it. I know it is definitely about the land. And, um, so I'm always really cautious. And so, I, I want to see people have an opportunity. So, I think having, making sure that, one of the things I keep saying to council is, I think we need our own housing department here in the city of Pittsburgh, but maybe we need our own economic development with, under the mayor's office, um, as, as a, as a department. Because I'm starting to see that we're losing a lot of say of what's happening in our city. And I love development. I want to see development happen. But I also want to see people taken care of. And I also want to see people have a voice in their neighborhoods and in their communities. And I want to see poor people have the opportunity to be lifted up and to invest in their own neighborhoods. So, I think that there's a way to do all those things, if there's a will. And I, I do think this mayor wants to see more of that. I, I think, I, I think I'm right about that. But, um, over this past month, I've been talking to you about some of the things I was angry about in my district and what happened with properties in my district. And it came through the land bank. And so, it was the very first property I had, came through a CDC that I took it from in the first place. And six, six years ago, I took it off, it was a property that was going for sale through the, um, U R A or through the real estate. I can't remember. It may have been real estate. But it was going to a CDC and the community told me it was going to be sold to a developer, um, that was on their board. Um, no federal 990s, none, none of those things were, were happening. So, I pulled the property and for six years, I held the property. And six years later, with the help of the land bank, it went back to the same, same group. Now, it's going to have a different use, but there's also nearby, um, some of the same uses that we're proposing, that, that are proposed, that are within, like, just walking feet, uh, walking distance. So, if I am skeptical, it's because I feel like you want to take our voice away for what our community wants, so that you can do what you want. And I don't, I don't know that what you want to do is bad. I'm just saying, I think I want to make sure my public and my community has a voice in this and a say in it. And what I don't like is the way the whole process comes out. It's like with, it was, to me, it was the same. We, the city always does this. They come to city council and they try to be strategic on how they're going to get something through us, instead of talking to us. And I feel like a lot of times what happens is, when you're trying to be strategic, that makes us guarded. Because now we want to know why you just didn't have a conversation with us. And so, for me, when you send members in to do things, when you send people in to speak, one of the things the unions learned about me years ago, and I can tell you that they know this, don't come down here and think you're going to intimidate me and have speakers come to the podium, because I know whom my community's saying what. I know what they're doing. I know what, how they really feel about things. You're never going to just come in down here and do that kind of stuff to me. It's never going to work. As a matter of fact, it backfires. So, they do know this. I would say to you, I would hope that you would have a conversation with me about it. And not necessarily go through all these other hoops and other game-playing and all that kind of stuff. Because, you know, we can do the same thing. I have concern. My concerns are valid, because we had a lot of concerns and a lot of issues around land in my district. And my community feels very disenfranchised from the city of Pittsburgh. They feel like the city of Pittsburgh has contributed to the blight. They feel like the U R A, with their lack of investment in the area, has contributed to the blight. I will say this, for the first time ever, this, these projects in Ferrywood, I want to thank the administration, I want to thank the mayor's office, we're getting some investments in our district, for the first time in a very long time. And so, I want to thank you for that. And, um, and I want to thank the U R A for that. And I love working with some of the people in the U R A. I want to be honest, you have some of the greatest staff, uh, working there. There are some, some really good people. And, and all of you here are amazing. But that doesn't mean we don't, we can't, we shouldn't have some, you know, conversations before we get to this point. Before we get to the point that you're coming to the table and having, having a public conversation about why I'm so guarded for my district. But I'm going to be guarded for them always. So, with that said, that's all I want to say. That's it. Be happy with that, because I have to schedule the public hearing to make this vote happen. And when you do play games like that, it makes me want to hold it 10 times longer. I just want to tell you.
I'm not sure to, to, to the games, what exactly you're referencing, Councilmember. But I know we have time soon to talk about priorities in the district, you know, with, with the couple of Ferrywood projects. Um, to talk about those, you know, happy to talk about other concerns, you know, whether it's specific to this agreement or otherwise, in the way in which the process goes. I mean, I, I do think, you know, Councilmember Lavelle talked about the prioritization that the land bank has set for itself and the way they want to dispose of the properties. And they are prioritizing low-income homeowners, right? Or, or owner occupants that, that live within the community. So, those are aligned, right? And, and there are public processes, you know, we can talk about the specifics of those and how are they designed. But, you know, the intent is not to, um, I believe, you know, hide anything as much as to keep it, you know, through a public process in that way.
I think doing, I think making, having conversations and making it more public, I think it's great. But I do think that there are times when we should all be talking a little bit more than we do. And I think that, and communicating a little bit better than what we do. We did have some meetings scheduled. We don't have those as often. You and I do have something coming up. And I do meet with Jake Pollak, Director Pollak, once a week. And he and I have a really good, I mean, we're really good at working together. But I, what I think is that when there's some issues like this, that you'd like, hey, this is where we are, this is what we want. But I feel like there's all these conversations happen and then you come to council. And you've already spoken to a couple of council members who are willing to carry the water. But I want somebody who's going to also worry about the constituents and council as a body. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I do have a few questions, so I'm going to take some time too. But we are at 4:24. So, we've already been here almost two hours. And so, I'll try to, um, pre-brief. Um, so, for kind of rhetorical purposes, we, we have a, a, we do have a tri-party agreement that we've been operating under since 2019, that is in Legisstar. Um, and the amendment, uh, the resolution last year was requesting amendments to it. Um, so, if I put a new paper on the table next week, transferring five properties to the land bank for affordable housing, for example, as we were talking about, what would happen? I'll start with Director Gula. What happens?
We would transfer them to the land bank and we would draft a deed, quitclaim it directly to them, and they could quiet title and sell them.
All right. And then, what do we expect the land bank would do? We have three members, or two members at the table of the land bank board. Um, would you receive them? You could vote yes or no, I assume.
Yes. Well, so, the challenge right now is we wouldn't have the financial resources to.
Transfer money with it.
You had an in, in game in mind?
For affordable housing.
Okay.
So, I, yeah, we've been kind of educated here at the table today that the land bank can't actually, we can't tell it who to sell the property to, but that we can kind of give it, uh, the, transfer properties for a purpose, right? Like, a policy, a public policy purpose, as other members have asked about today. Like, we need affordable housing. We have this property. Let's send these five parcels over to the land bank for affordable housing.
Just one point of clarification. You could say to the land bank, I have a young couple looking to buy their first home. They're really interested in said property and we would like to transfer it to the universe, to the land bank for that purpose.
In the resolution?
Now, someone else could also say, well, I'd be interested in, uh, buying that property as well. Um, in which case, then, there's a tough, but you could say, I have an end user, a young couple, who is interested in buying their first affordable home. I would like to transfer it for that purpose.
Mm-hmm. And then, how does that one property then get decided? The land bank board votes on whether to give it to the young couple that all of city council voted to, to give it to, or to give it to someone else?
Ultimately, the land bank board would have to make that vote.
But the land bank board chooses the buyer?
Yes. After a series of qualif, I'm sorry, I don't have my policy procedures in front of me. But there's a series of qualifications, are they in good standing with their taxes? Like, all this sort of stuff is there. And so, they become a qualified buyer. Um, so, we actually have to qualify the, the purchaser. And assuming all of that goes well, we can continue to proceed. But again, there's still a public process. So, we have to notify the public of this is the intent. Someone could come and object to that if they wanted to. So, it's not as simple as we just do it, but yes, we could move with the intent to sell it to them.
Rhetorically, hypothetically, I only have five treasure sale properties in my whole district, right? Actually, I've had others that I've transferred to the greenway. But let's say I have five. And every single one is surrounded by communities that are, one, it's, it's absolutely unanimous. There's community consensus that these five parcels should only be used, that are vacant parcels shall be used for affordable housing. The first, the general, Director Gula, can chop, chop, send it over to you, what, in two weeks? Okay, so then, boom, the land bank has it in two weeks. Um, which is a lot faster than the flow chart that's been proposed, actually. So, that actually is the most expeditious way for property to move from the city's inventory to the land bank, is by council resolution. Seems like to me. Seems like everybody kind of just agreed to that. But it, it also depends on whether the land bank, you know, wants to receive that property or is ready for it and is funded to do it. Um, but we could start next week. I probably do have five parcels that I would like to be disposed for affordable housing, only affordable housing. Um, and so, similarly, if there are, you know, city farmers who's, are farming on parcels that they have leases from the city, but there's still tax, you know, there's liens on those properties that they're, they're treasure sales properties that have the city of Pittsburgh on the deed. Could I send five of those over to, or city council could vote to send five of those over to the land bank next, beginning next week? Um, but the land bank, similarly then, would clear the titles, but may or may not actually sell it to that farmer who's been farming on that piece of property for eight years. According to the scenario we just talked about.
I mean, technically, yes. I think if this body said to the land bank, we're looking to move property to protect the, this farm. I don't see a scen, I'm speaking for myself. I don't see a scenario in which case the land bank would receive such property, work to clear title, and then choose to do something separate with it.
Can we get a legal agreement in place that would make sure of that? Because this proposed agreement does not make sure of that. We're kind of just leaving it up to, like, future land bank board who may or may not, may hate farms. I know, I don't know, right? May hate affordable housing. We don't know who they're going to be. So, it's, it's not, it's not memorialized in the agreement. But it could be. So, that's, that's, that's a question. But again, we don't want to, maybe we can contemplate when we discuss at, at another time. But I think that's, that's one point. And then, similarly, um, thank you Solicitor Kubiak for talking about deed restrictions. As you know, I've been lobbying for this for some time. In 2020, I passed legislation, city council supported legislation that I sponsored that said, asking the city departments to look through this whole inventory of treasure sale deeds to identify properties that would be conducive to urban ag and deed restrict them for that purpose. It hasn't happened yet. I'm really hopeful it will happen. Um, and, um, we know that there has been, uh, Food Policy Council and my, a member of my office And we know that there has been, the Food Policy Council and my, a member of my office and the planning department have been working on with our G I S department and going through parcels by like shade, by topography, landslide prone, those kinds of things, looking for spots that will be optimal and don't really need to be used for development, right? We can't, it's not like we have to assume that the best use of every single parcel in the city of Pittsburgh is is development. Not at this point in history. So I'm appreciative that we're willing to use those restrictions similarly for affordable housing. Um, you and I have talked about that in the past. We've also heard testimony today, and I've actually sidebared a little bit with Councilman Lavelle, that this current memo supposedly, as we've learned, even under the current memo, city council could send properties to the land bank next week. So we've all established that that's true, right? So it's true that we can, the city can send properties to the land bank under the current agreement. Um, and so was it, how many, but the the new proposed agreement kind of lays out a path for the land bank to specifically request specific parcels, which is a different thing. That is what is new, newly proposed. So again, because it's supposedly difficult, it would be too hard under the current agreement. And this is purely being Socratic here because I actually know the answer. How many properties did have the land bank requested from city finance under the current agreement?
Under the current agreement?
Correct, since 2019.
Hmm, not very many.
Zero, zero, yes, so zero.
We just gave them, we gave them Meadow Street and none.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, and so there's a bit of kind of a, I think we may be arguing over kind of hypotheticals, right? A little bit. Um, and I don't know that we want to be, you know, people, I I would just hope that we don't all just dig in our heels about trying to have some perfect method when we actually have multiple methods available in front of us. Also, in today's testimony, we heard that the land bank basically will only take properties that it can sell. Um, so that also kind of makes me wonder then how, how, how do we do the farms in the urban ag?
Okay, so I'll clarify because that was, that was my statement. Um, so in the land bank's policy procedures, it does.
You just saw in that sign.
So. No, she asked me.
Why are we doing it to a report?
She, um, it's, oh, it does say that we can also take for agriculture, take for greenways, like all that is spelled out. I, my point was, I think, was to Councilman Coghill, was that if we're taking property, physical property, excuse, not just land, but actually brick and mortar, there's no interest in us taking that because I believe we can only hold it for, I think, three years? I think is the maximum we can even hold it for. Um, so we're only, we would be looking to acquire physical structures that we could then sell.
Right, right. So thank you for clarifying that because I think that's one of the things that a lot of people have pinned their hopes on. And we wanted to be sure that this was going to be insured in the proposed agreement.
Let me get a clarification or since we're going back on clarification, there is a protective process for gardens as well.
Thank you. So, um, we have, oh, there's a couple of points here, but I'll try to to kind of combine them and summarize them. We want to be sure, I think, that again, these purposes that council members have spoken to are memorialized in the agreement and maybe they're not so far. And then one of the new differences we haven't talked about today, which is that the proposed agreement has attachments that the current agreement does not. And one of the attachments is Exhibit C, which is the 2022 bilateral agreement between the U R A and the land bank from February 2022. It looks like in the new language that that gives the U R A the power to take any land bank property and to intervene. So let's say we we send the garden to or community farm to be titled cleared by the land bank. The land bank board votes to dispose of it to the farmer that's been tending it to eight years. Does the U R A in Exhibit C have the power to intervene on that sale because they've decided a developer wants it? That's what some attorneys, that's how they read it.
I don't think so. That's, that's not my understanding, but.
And would you be supportive of that power?
No, I don't, I don't do.
Then there's no reason for it to be there.
That's the right answer.
So there's no reason for it to be there, right? And so, um, if that.
I haven't read it.
Well, maybe we'll start there then.
Yeah, I need, I need to read it.
Let's do that. I have shared all of the, like, the, the, all of the materials that have been given to me are shared in the shared folder. Um, so anything that I've received, having, I've been asking these questions now for almost 12 months. Um, if I've gotten them, I've shared them to all members and staff. So you have it, anything that I have, you have.
I just, I just don't want to be on record of misspeaking.
I think it was handed to us in our, in our March briefing. Um, it was that the first agreement was given to us in the the November, December briefing without Exhibit C. And so we were specifically requested the exhibits to the proposed agreement. And that turned out to be the February 2022 side agreement. It's not a tri-party agreement. It's just a two-party agreement. So the land bank and the U R A have a current two-party agreement. Um, city's not party two, so. How these things fit together, I think, have a lot of import for the public and these transactions. Because again, we can, if if there's trump power that the U R A has over both city council and the land bank, and that's just an accident, then let's remove it.
Yeah, I think to to Councilmember Lavelle's, you know, there's, I don't believe that was the intent, right? And and to the agreement before us, right, when in in the legislation, the goal here is to establish procedures and protocol, right, within the amendment to the agreement. So to whatever degree we need to clarify those procedures and protocols within the amendment to the agreement itself or to some of the mechanisms that have been, you know, brought up today, be it oversight, deed restriction, use categorization, et cetera, for transfers from the city. You know, I do believe, council member, there's ways to build in those protections for, you know, the example that you cited or others that were not for sale.
Well, that's all of the questions I had today. Is there any other members who wanted to have more?
Yeah, I just want to make sure. So you mentioned to Councilwoman Coghill that if we give you Solicitor the list, so is that for all council members?
Certainly is.
Okay, I want to make sure that's on record, but I, but I do want to.
And I'll prioritize the South and the West.
I want to tell you, thank you, thank you, there you go. Now, now you, now we're talking. But I do want to say, I think that, um, I want to thank you all for being here because I know that, I knew I was tense coming into this meeting, but I said I did want to keep an open mind. I wanted to hear a thing. But I'm always tense when it comes to the land because Ms. Nixon taught me well, okay? So I'm going to be, I'm going to be tense. But, um, but I do want to say, I think that the mayor's office has hired some amazing people to to work with for the city of Pittsburgh. And so if I would trust anybody, it would be some of you. So that's all I would say. But, um, but I'm going to be cautious and and I'm going to look at the agreements and everything before we have any kind of votes or or before I schedule the hearings.
Councilwoman Warwick?
Yeah, well, so just, just to kind of underscore and.
You might, council.
Oh, sorry.
But I I will say that, um, yeah, that before I got, I did, this is just anecdotal, right? There was a situation in where there, there, there's a large piece of land on Second Avenue in the historic Hazelwood Business District. And it was abundantly clear that the, um, that the community wanted a grocery store on this property. I mean, we had meeting after meeting after meeting. And it was, it's in the greater Hazelwood plan. I mean, this, there was no question. And what ended up happening, I mean, and it was decided to not not do a grocery store on this property. But not only was it decided not to do a grocery store, they didn't even look into doing a grocery store. They didn't even inquire, not, not, nobody at the U R A even made a phone call to Aldi to see. And then Aldi actually entered into building a grocery store very close by. So, I mean, now that, and and now the community is actually working to do a grocery store on a, on a much inferior piece of property across the street, right? The, the, the original piece would have been a far better property at any rate. That's just to say that, you know, had there been, you know, had there been a vote at council about what to do, you know what I mean, about what happens with that property? And and then, you know, somebody there representing the people that could have said and then come to this body and said, look, this really is what the community wants done here. Or or this really isn't, the community really doesn't want this. You know, not to say that it has to be that, but it, but they really don't want this. I mean, it it's all just to say that that, I, I, I really feel that that's important. We can't just count on, you know, you know, what the concept of, it, it really has to be built into the process. So that leads me, I guess, to like, what are the next steps here? So like in this agreement, are, are, are you going to go back and sort of make some changes based on this conversation? Or do we have to introduce amendment? I mean, you know, not to sort of reveal, show all my cards, but do I have to go and like read the minutia of this agreement and be like with my red pen, like, okay, this and that? So what, what are the next steps?
I have a red pen.
So we'll take the council president's red pen. I, I mean, I, I think, you know, we've heard a lot of sort of concerns across the spectrum today. You know, we can certainly have conversations, um, you know, with our folks, with the authority, with, you know, the land bank around ways in which we can be responsive to what we've heard, right? As that goes through, I know there's still a public hearing to happen as well. I'm sure there's going to be additional feedback that we hear within that. But in terms of building in some of the protections and then how to still make sure that we're setting it up in a way that allows it to fill the need, you know, within the system that, you know, Councilmember Gross started it in terms of the the promise of the land bank. You know, I think that's paramount if we're going to deal with the 13,000 properties that are before us to be able to deliver on, you know, affordable housing, blight remediation, affordable commercial, et cetera. And and, yeah, it's always that balance, right? Between what do we put in with policy to to be able to still have something that's nimble, right? Endurable, but it's incumbent on us to to make sure to do the outreach that, um, it sounds like you've heard recently in your interactions with the authority. And, you know, I apologize for for what happened prior, but, um, you know, we'll do what we can to to make sure to do right by the folks, you know, in the neighborhoods, so.
Thank you. Is that all you have, Councilwoman Warwick?
Um, yeah, I, I think so, I think so. I, I do, sorry to, it feels very weird how much folks don't want council to be able to say who, who the land bank can sell. I mean, does this not feel weird? We approve like everything that comes through. I mean, we're, we're, we're eight to zero yes on like everything that comes through here. I mean, I don't know. It feels like it. I mean, at any rate, I guess I'm, I'm gonna, I'll, I guess it's been a long meeting, but that's, that's all for me.
And Councilman Wilson and Councilwoman Strasburger, do you want to, do you have something to brief?
There you go, there you go.
Councilman Wilson.
Me too, I got one thing.
I'll, I'll wait to the very end.
All right. Second round, Councilman Wilson.
I guess I'll talk like Micro Machine Mini Guy to get through this. I'm kidding, I have one question. So in step five, the P L B will pay $2,200 and then also $5,000. I'm interested in cutting that cost. Is there an appetite on that side, this, on the side of the table to cut it to zero?
I don't know about zero. I don't know about zero because the city did.
So just be, I'm sorry, can I, I just want to say, I didn't say for the public, the full questions that right now, and even on the U R A, there is a transfer fee.
There is a transfer.
And that we charge U R A.
We charge the U R A $2,200 for lots, $5,000 for buildings. And then they also pay the cost of treasure sale and the U R A pays cost of quiet title. They pay for their own title report and supply that to us. We weren't looking to recreate the wheel, right? We wanted to, I did for one, so we thought we would do and mimic the exact same for the other entity. So currently, the property reserve pays $100 for lots and $1,000 for buildings, for structures, plus costs. I don't think that if we were looking to change the price, I don't think that's a structure like that would be unreasonable to give to the land bank, seeing that CDCs, who they probably would be in contact with most, that's what they're used to paying. But it, it can't go to zero because we've, the three taxing bodies, not just the city, but the city, the school district and the county have already expended fees to put the properties into treasure sale. And also we've accumulated holding costs. So we would have to have some kind of reimbursement, so.
Well, I have to just say, um, I, I mean, I think one of the things that we would be interested in tracking too is the taxes that aren't being paid on this. And so, I, I mean, really, the city, I, I, I just am concerned because financially, we've got to be looking at things that at least bring us to even, especially over the long run and not, aren't just constantly costing the city money. So I'm, I, I think this is a small contribution for this, especially given the fact that we're also handing the land bank $7 million from the ARP allocation. So, uh, I, I just feel strongly that we need to continue to make sure that we're tracking those costs and that we're not getting the city further in, in the hole.
I figured if I was going to start negotiating, I'd start at zero.
It was a nice try.
I have no further questions.
You, Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to address the, the, the council, Councilwoman Warwick's question about like, why is there a concern about council oversight on this? And I, I really don't have concern over what's currently in here. But this is going to be an imperfect comparison. But when I think of our power or our zone, our power to over land use and zoning, we have delegated some of that power to the Z B A, to the Zoning Board of Adjustment, in part because if we handled every single case that came to the Z B A, we would have time for nothing else. Other small municipalities don't do it that way, but we do. And so what happens when we get the list of their agenda and we see something that we know the community disagrees with or that we disagree with? We organize the community to show up to the Z B A hearings and protest. And oftentimes, that's successful. And I think that that is still possible here. We are delegating a responsibility that we might not have the, I'm not sure if this is a perfect example because I'm not actually sure we're delegating authority. But we are, we have authorized this, this, this entity and they are, they have a role and something that we are not taking on, nor do we have time to take on. And I don't know why the same couldn't be true. We have, we will be notified when every property is, um, the transfer request is, is, comes through council. We'll have two weeks to deliberate to find out what do we think the intent is here? Who do we think the end buyer will be? Like, what is the, what are, and to actually investigate. And then if we want to follow that, if there's community concern, we can organize the community to attend the land bank meeting and, you know, and and say, the community is not satisfied, please go back to the drawing board here. So I, that's one reason I'm, I'm sort of, that's one of my rationale, part of my rationale here. Another is that, like, I trust everyone on this council. I don't necessarily trust that a future council wouldn't use politics or other kind of nefarious purposes to stymie the, I don't know, the, the sale or the disposal of a property. Yes, on the one hand, council members are the voice of the community. And for this council, I have no doubt that that is true. But I, I do worry about, um, you know, it being bogged down in so much process that it really is no, it is no quicker than the current process, um, which is, you know, held up by the courts. So I guess those are my two reasons. I'm not totally opposed to, to the idea. And I certainly, you know, have come around to the idea of having city council approval for the property transfer request. But, um, yeah, let's leave it there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, so I just want to sum this up for, on my end. Again, I want you to have all the resources you need across the city to do whatever the situation is. I think I tried to explain the situation in my district is quite different, I think, at least from what I see right now. Not that I don't have structures there that need to be tended to, city-owned properties. I have the address, I was going back and forth with Sally. And earlier I said I would support this. Now, I want to stop short of saying that. I need to know, number one, we can do something simple like this. This is a simple thing, it's no risk whatsoever. Maybe Sally's willing to take. simple thing. It's no risk whatsoever. Maybe Sally's willing to take it on. I hope so, Sally. It's a, you know, and we should do this to all dead-end properties. It's just, just makes complete sense. You know, we should get this on the market. Otherwise, it sits there until someday it falls in our hands. By then, it needs to be torn down. So that's really the difference. So I just want to make sure we have the address, Sally. I will give it to you. Let's look into it. Let's talk about it. And again, I've done this. I could help coach you through it if, if need be. All right. The other thing was the $7 million. Yeah, I'm not convinced. No matter how much we sub everything out, $7 million is a lot of money for one staffer and one manager. And to whatever the process, how each individual process is going to cost a little bit of money, I understand that. I'm really concerned as to, when we say stabilize, I know the URA does that, and that's, that's great. But the land bank, I feel like, shouldn't be in the stabilizing business. I understand trying to prepare it for sale. But I, I worry. I've seen some of the URA transactions where people applied, you know, where we stabilized some properties. I'm like, we're throwing money into this thing, and we don't recoup that. And Chris, as to what you were saying earlier, we, we, this land bank could be profitable if we do it right, I feel, not cost us an arm and a leg. We have $7 million, a gift from the federal government. We're not going to have that in the future. What about five years from now when we burn through that money, or two years from now? How are they going to sustain themselves? How are we going to operate? So they need the funds. They need to come up with a plan. I need to know how they're going to spend that $7 million as to, is it just on attorneys? Is it stabilizing property? And who's going to be behind it? If you're telling me one staffer and one manager is going to spend $7 million, I don't believe it. It's just, it's a lot, it's hard work to spend that kind of money. I could do it, though. But, you know, we'll see with them. So, so anyway, I just wanted to be.
We'll make sure to follow up with.
Okay, this is the most important thing. This dead-end property is, you can be heroes for this, for me and for the community. It's simple, it's clear, and it's easy. And there's nothing that should be stopping. So I said, coming out of here today, I will support anything if somebody can handle this for me and get it, get it moving. All right? I mean, I can do it. I can do it. So we should be able to do that, right? So I'm going to give this to you, Sally, because I know you're chomping at the bit to take this, right? Okay. All right. I think it's good enough. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sure. Second round, Councilman Lavelle.
Very briefly, I'll make sure members see the adopted budget, because we actually do have an adopted budget that shows how we're actually going to expend all the money.
Oh, is that right?
And if the city decided to clear all title, that money would be gone overnight. But it would, like, instantly. I think, I'll, I'll also try to make sure I send the policies and procedures to all members, because I think the concerns that have been brought up are all memorialized in those policies and procedures. So I'll make sure members get that as well. And as I sit here, Councilwoman, I'm, I'm gonna follow up and make sure I read every single thing. But the only MOU I know of between the URA and the land bank is for us to send property into it. It's not for us to have a trump card. But I'm gonna go back and read, and I'll follow up with you.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yeah, we'll make sure we have somebody read it, too, in addition to you. Thank you, thank you for your efforts. But I do want to say, since we have so much money in the land bank, why haven't we done anything so far? Do you know? What's about the, what about the ARPA funds?
The, the ARPA funds are not with the land bank yet until.
Till this.
Until we can move, because they're drafted.
So I'm going to be honest with you. I remember one of the reasons I gave such a hard time to the land bank, you can sit back, Councilman Wilson. One of the reasons I had given so much trouble to the land bank when I was on there was, they kept wanting foundation funding and all this, and I wanted the public to control it, not private. And so I just started having like a lot of issues then. And that's when I said, I'm going to off this thing, because I'm not going to have, play these games. But I just want to make sure that public dollars are going. I really, I would be willing to put money into it more if we had to, do what we had to do, as long as I thought that they were doing what was right for the public. And as long as I thought that the public would have a voice in their own neighborhoods, and as long as council had a lot of say. That means, to me, that's There was one other thing I wanted to say. I can't remember what it was, but something about the, I wanted to ask about the funding. And I can't remember the other thing. I'll let Councilwoman Gross wrap it up, because if I can think of it, I'll tell you what it was. But I do, but I do want to say, I, I do think that, for me, I'm on edge because of everything that's going on. And I, I think that there's a lot of good that could come from it. But I think, and I listened to Councilwoman Lavelle, and he explains it, I mean, he really does explain it well. So, but I'm still not, still not sold, not 100%. But I, I think that we have a lot of properties that were, I'm still, it's going to leave up to question what happens to a lot of those parcels. And so I, I don't want it to be that just people are just taking all the desirable land and we're left with the lands as we are now, that we can't do much with. So that's it. Thank you, Councilman.
Appreciate that. Any other members? Third round? All right. Well, we've been here more than two hours. I just want to also thank everyone on the panel for being here, for making time, for answering the questions. And I will just, I don't think I need a motion to adjourn anymore, right? I'm calling this meeting to adjourn.